That's yours, okay.
One day they had all pens here for us.
Okay.
All right, give me two seconds.
All right, I mean, we're good to go.
Okay, you're all set now.
All right, good evening. This meeting is called order. First item of business is approval of minutes, but apparently we're looking for an extension on that.
An extension request to the next meeting, which is going to be the meeting. Next meeting that we have is not.
It's fifteenth, I think.
Nope, I will be able to tell you in a moment, twenty seconds.
Okay, so if I get a motion to extend.
I'll make a motion to extend the June tenth, twenty twenty five meetings to the twenty second of July.
All right, any discussion? Lacking any discussion or favor? All right. Yes, I'd like to, well, if you'd like to make a motion, I'd like to move new business to up to before old business.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move. Old business to right in front of.
Or new business.
After new business.
Okay, so the motion is to move new business to before old business, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
A second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? All right, with that, the first item of new business is a requested clarification of uses for master plan decision September eleventh, two thousand eighteen, amended September fourteenth, twenty twenty one. For the preserve at Boulder Hills Phase Two submitted by attorney America Scungio on behalf of clients. Preserve at Boulder Hills LLC, the Preserve at Boulder Hills Two LLC, Preserve at Boulder Hills Three LLC, the Preserve. At Boulder Hills Four LLC, Castle Residence LLC and MTM Development Corp. So Talia, perhaps if you could give us an overview of this.
So Attorney Scungio has submitted a request to have the planning board clarify the master plan approval as it releases the restaurant use concerning the approved vehicle service station slash convenience store. So in the letter that he provided, he noted that the narrative that accompanied the master plan application noted that the service station slash convenience store would contain a deli use. But that the master plan approval decision did not specifically note this use as an approved use. He stated that the use code applicable to the property at the time of the application and as of this date does not provide for a separate deli use, but there are use codes. Use code sets for the two restaurant uses. It is attorney's friend's opinion that it is clear from the narrative filed with the application that a restaurant use was in fact proposed and approved by the planning board. As a result, the applicant seeks a clarification from the planning board, the restaurant uses pursuant to use code. Eight six four and or use code eight six six were in fact proposed and approved as part of the master plan approval to be included. As an approved use concerning the approved service station convenience. So when the master plan decision was rendered, it was initially rendered on September eleventh, twenty eighteen, it was then amended on September fourteenth, twenty twenty one. Therein, the amended master plan decision. Had these identified uses residential equestrian daycare private club health club outdoor recreation clubhouse and vehicle service station convenience store uses. As well as novelty sleeping uses adjacent with clubhouses and open space. The gas station with no car wash proposed was slated for plat five B lot thirty eight. The master plan decision references materials that were submitted by the applicant during that stage of review included attachments number thirty and number thirty three that are listed on the master plan decision. Attachment thirty identified was identified as building renderings. On the specific rendering for gas station convenience store shows a forty two by eighty foot building, a sixty five by forty foot area for gasoline pumps and. By thirty foot car wash. Attachment number thirty three was identified as plans revised July seventh, twenty eighteen and August second, twenty eighteen prepared by Sean D and Associates. Sheet six of twenty three also called C one of the master plan banner revision date of August second, twenty eighteen identifies amongst other items. The proposed phase two building program which identifies the supposed for each lot within the subject development, the gross building area and square feet of the proposed uses. And the parking chart which shows the parking requirements for each use. The following uses were proposed per the proposed phase two. Building program. Six, that six A lot five equestrian complex, twenty seven single family union units. At six A lot twenty five twelve single family union units. That six B lot two sixty nine single family units accessory maintenance building novelty accessory sleeping structures, three seven unit multifamily structures. Two mixed use building with dwelling units and clubhouse. That five B lot thirty eight vehicle service station with convenience store daycare health club private club and ten four unit multifamily structures. Flat six B lot four three single family units commercial slash non-commercial recreational facility helipad novelty accessory sleeping structure. The following gross building area was proposed for the vehicle service station with convenience store and the gross building area chart. Of two thousand five hundred and thirty five plus or minus square feet. Between when the rendering was submitted and the revised master plan was submitted, gas station convenience source slash vehicle service station decreased in size by eight hundred and twenty five square feet. The parking chart identified the parking proposed for the equestrian complex, single family units, health club, private club. Four unit multifamily, seven unit multifamily, two mixed use buildings with dwelling units and clubhouse daycare and vehicle service station with convenience store. The phase two C submission. After the phase two C application was submitted, I provided the applicant with a letter of incompleteness on September sixth, twenty twenty four, and I've included that letter for the board's review. When reviewing the phase two C application, I found that the proposed gas station is labeled by MTM Development and Kerrigan Engineering on their design development plan dated seven twenty five twenty three proposed the following layout. A convenience store, six bathrooms and office, a break room, delivery slash storage room, a walk-in freezer, a kitchen, a front desk area, a dining area with twenty two tables and sixty eight seats. I reviewed the master plan approvals that were rendered and I found that a dining area slash restaurant had not been included in the master plan approval. In the applicant's letter of incompleteness, I explained that the application cannot be certified complete as proposed diner and urgent care slash medical office building uses were not permitted as part of the phase two master plan decision. Further, I explained that to pursue uses that were not permitted as part of the phase two master plan decision, the phase two master plan decision must be amended. Please submit a request with the planning board to amend the phase two master plan decision to allow proposed uses contemplated as part of the phase two preliminary plan application. As a result, the applicant through their attorney has submitted the clarification request. So the planning board has been asked to clarify whether the master plan approval included use code eight six four and or use code eight six five. If the planning board believes that use codes eight six four and or eight six five were included in the master plan approval, the board should confirm this on the record. It is my understanding that if the board makes such a finding, base two C will be resubmitted and it will include use codes eight six four and or eight six five. If the planning board believes that the use codes eight six four and or eight six five were not included in the master plan approval, the board should confirm this on the record. Use codes eight six four and eight six six. Excuse me, I should have said eight six. Eight six six, not eight six five. The planning board believes that use codes eight six four and or eight six six were not included in the master plan approval, the board should confirm this on the record. Use codes eight six four and eight six six are permitted in the PD zone, so these uses could be incorporated if the planning board believes they are appropriate. I do not know if a restaurant that serves alcohol can be connected to a gas station in state of Rhode Island, the board may be inclined to inquire with the applicant. The number of parking spaces required for the combined vehicle service station with convenience serving restaurant should be confirmed by the zoning.
It's a mouthful, but so. And before we hear from the preserve, we just like some clarification perhaps from our solicitor. So, so. So, and we'll hear from Mr. Scungio, but it basically sounds like. The preserve is looking to include a use as of a restaurant or the. You know, for the, for this development. Now, Chris, I'm just trying, quite honestly, I, I have a feeling that the board's going to be receptive to this. I'm just trying to figure out what the, what the easiest way was perhaps going to be, whether it's. I'm, I'm thinking for the board to determine that. The use of a restaurant was included in the. And the master plan may be difficult, and it may be easier to just. You know, discuss amending the master plan to include a restaurant, which seems pretty benign to me. Is there, is there any preference on this from, you know, just the legal standpoint, making this easy?
So, so the question that you're asking is, I understand is, what's the mechanism if this board is inclined to? Confirm that a restaurant use was included in the master plan decision when the language. Convenience store and deli. And the end deli part I would think would be the. The operative portion of that decision to be the restaurant kind of using them synonymously. So if you find that eight, section eight sixty six. Is in fact met. I think as Talia stated, the planner has stated, putting that on the record. They can rely on that, they being the preserve, and I would let Mr. Scungio. Speak to that as well. He may not be comfortable with that as, as enough. I would think that would be enough. If, if the board is inclined to. Approve it saying, well, it wasn't clear enough and then amend the master plan. To clarify that, I think that could be done as well. By vote of the board. I'd also want to hear from the applicant's attorney. That they were satisfied that they would be comfortable with that being satisfactory because they have to rely on.
Okay, but either, either way, this is something the board. Is under the purview to vote on.
Yeah.
I didn't reach a decision on.
Yes.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, no, please, yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Okay. All right, with that, you know, Mr. Scungio, good evening.
Good evening, Emmerico Scungio, I represent the preserve and all those entities.
You're gonna listen again?
I'm not gonna be psyched on. We have had a series of meetings, monthly meetings, which have been very productive with the town staff, the solicitor. In, in one of the meetings. The issue with respect to the presentation of the two C. Submission for preliminary plan approval came up about the gas station. Slash retail store slash deli slash restaurant. And as the town planner has indicated, was her position that it wasn't, and it wasn't part of the master plan approval that the gas station service station. Would, does include a restaurant use and. The. The reason that we're here this evening is I that is that we decided at that meeting that it may be best to seek clarification from this board. And or authority to amend the master plan decision, in my opinion, is either one of those is fine. But I think the argument with respect to what was before the board back way back when, seven plus years ago now. Was in, and I am relying completely upon what was presented in the narrative, which was attached to my letter in the narrative sets what that it was a vehicle service station. In parentheses, gas station with eight pumps in a convenience store with, with a deli in public restrooms and deli. Is the thought of the applicant that refers to a restaurant. I, I looked up the definition of delicatessen. In Wikipedia and it said a deli can be a simple retail grocery store, a sit down restaurant or any combination thereof, which helps us to not, not in any event.
Cats deli in New York or it could be, yeah.
Right, it could be just some guy slicing meat.
Exactly.
And filling.
Right.
Deli, deli. Orders. In any event, it's the position of the preserve that. What was before the board way back when in two thousand eighteen was in fact. In the master plan, which contains, as you know, a series of other land uses. And elements that took a series of evenings, one of which I was speaking with the, with the assistant today was held in the gym in a night similar to tonight where everyone was hot. Bobbing all night long.
Exactly, I remember those nights and, and as we all, as we all know, those, you know, that. That information was voluminous and it's, it doesn't surprise me with all the uses that we had discussed that perhaps we, you know. Missed one in documenting it in the decision, you know, quite honestly, other than, other than seeing what you presented in the narrative. I don't specifically recall that. I do recall that there was discussion about. And, and, and a lot of these things are kind, were kind of vague and they developed into other things, you know, you know, for example, we were told at one point. There may be buffalo raised on the property. Well, that didn't happen yet, but. I do remember Paul saying that this would be, he envisioned a service station with like some, some sort of restaurant element. Similar to something you might find up in like the country store up in Vermont or Maine, so. I don't, I don't think this is outside of what our expectations were, but it wasn't, I don't believe it was. Well documented in that decision. I mean, honestly, my recommendation would be if the board is in favor of it and after. Hearing your presentation, perhaps seeing what you're actually looking to do. I mean, I, I feel more comfortable just voting on amending the master plan to include those uses than it's. And it's concrete in the future. If anybody questions it, it's pretty solid, but I don't know. I don't, apparently you're saying.
That's acceptable to us.
Okay.
But the use that we're, I, I would ask that the board consider the eight sixty four use so that all options are open, which is a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages.
Right.
And or, and or eight sixty six, both, both of those uses be permitted.
Right, I would say eight sixty four and or eight sixty six and then, you know, obviously the, the liquor permits and all that stuff is something you'd have to work out in the, the future.
And, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would say to Mr. Scungio is on the agenda. For new business under the request for clarification. The applicants are seeking clarification from the planning board. In relation to approved uses incorporated in the master plan approval, so clarification. Planning board will discuss, consider it, possibly vote on the request. So what I don't want to happen is they're voting to amend the master plan that, that is not, that's not specifically referenced tonight.
So if they can clarify that, would that master plan did in fact include those two uses that would satisfy it?
And then there is, there's a possibility get on the next agenda to actually vote to amend the master. And make that request.
If, if I think the clarification, if they clarify that the original master plan included the eight sixty six. And eight sixty four uses, I don't think that they were done at that point, we can go to preliminary.
That, that's fine with me. I know you, you were, but before you did say you wanted.
I did, the chair wanted and, and the board was more inclined to just amend it, but. If you say, if you're saying because of how it was advertised, it should be a clarification rather than amendment. As long as it's clarified that what was approved back in September. Two thousand eighteen was in fact those two uses.
I'm not saying it should. I'm saying tonight on the agenda is clarification.
Right.
If the board wants to amend the master plan, that should be advertised as amending the master plan. And then you vote on that at a subsequent hearing after this.
What I'm saying is I don't, I, I would rather, I don't think it's necessary if the board tonight votes to clarify its initial decision. And that clarification says those two uses were included. In the master panel.
I understand.
Okay. All right. So I don't, so a couple of ways we could do this. The board wants further information from the applicant. Or you feel you got enough information after going through, after going through the records. I guess a, a lot of you weren't here, that's part of the issue.
Right, right. Right.
My biggest question would be, does those two codes? Actually, are they uses for the zoning?
They're permitted in the zone.
They are permitted.
In the PD zone, they're both permitted and there is no deli use under the use code, so there's, there's nothing to. To put the deli use. If you say a deli can go there, it has to be a restaurant. It has to be the eight sixty six or eight sixty four.
That's really my only question.
Okay, and then I, I just think the only sticky point is, I mean. I'm comfortable because I was part of the board at that point and I, I'm willing to sit here and say. Yeah, I mean, even, even though it wasn't in the decision. Specifically, it was in the narrative, there was discussion on it, I believe that this. Meets the intent of the master plan and I'm, I'm fine with it, but I don't know if the rest of the board, you know.
Yeah, but to, to my not being here, I mean, personally, I, I. The little I know about this, I would prefer to see an amendment to the master plan. The little I know about this, I would prefer to see an amendment to the master plan. As a way to, as a way to do it, just to, just to clarify things a bit more. You know, right? I don't know, is it, is it, does it del, is it only a restaurant that serves alcohol? It just seems. You know, and then the fact that it's been like seven years, just, I just think it would be more prudent to. That, that's, that's my take, so all I know about it.
Let, let's, let's put it this way, if, if you have to come back through the board. To get the amendment on the agenda, i- is that, is that setting you back time-wise?
It does. Because we, then we have to wait to, to, to get a certification of the preliminary plan for that building. To come back with the preliminary. Unless we can come back with both of them, but I don't know if she can allow her to accept it with. The restaurant use conditioned upon, and moving forward with preliminary and. So preliminary phase two C with amendment.
So what are your thoughts on that, Chris? I, I'm quite honestly, I don't have any issue with this at all. From an economic development standpoint and everything about this, I, I want to move it forward, but I'm looking for. Looking for the quickest way to do this and I, I just don't feel, I think some of the board members aren't going to feel comfortable. Saying, yeah, I remember that. Well, they, they don't, they're gonna, you know.
On the agenda tonight is request for clarification. So you could make that clarification, vote on that this evening. Just an idea and then put down, uh, for. Amendment.
So the next scheduled meeting is the twenty-second. We feasibly could. Have a special meeting where you just have the master plan and you just say, yes, this is good. That could be sooner than the twenty-second of July. We have to identify a particular date, but.
We only have one meeting.
We only have one meeting in July because the, the regularly scheduled first meeting has been usurped by the referendum.
Ms. Gillette, can the. Does it hold up the preliminary plan approval or any approvals? If the clarification is voted on favorably by the board, does that delay the applicant?
I don't know if the clarification alone would give them specific rights. In the same way that amending a master plan decision would. I don't know the answer to that question.
Which could be, would. Schedule it for the twenty-second on the amendment to the master plan for the restaurant use. And at the same time, you have that preliminary plan certified and be before the board. With the preliminary plan approval application, same meeting.
I can't guarantee that I can certify the preliminary plan complete. I, I, I think that as soon as you asked the question, you knew what my response would be. We've been doing this for a couple of years now and, you know, I. I respect your opinion, but. I think that I would need to actually be able to look at the plan and be able to say yes or no. I can't. I can't definitively say whether or not I can certify a complete right now. I can certainly look at it and I can certainly try.
So could, would you, would you be comfortable if it meets your standards with ups except for the master plan? Is not, in your opinion, classified a restaurant use, presenting that as a complete application to the board for hearing the same light?
Well, I think that it's a threshold issue. I think that whether or not the use is allowed is what then allows you to pursue other.
So it's no.
Continue development.
Your answer is no. That's the dilemma we face.
So, Mr. Chairman, so if the, if you were to vote and the clarification were to be approved. As the applicant has, has requested. In fact, it, it would seem that the amendment would be. Almost perfunctory. I mean, it's, it hasn't happened, but it's. Difficult to envision it not happening. Is that, but that doesn't, that still doesn't get you where you need to go.
So I guess the, 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 the issue is whether or not. The board members that have not been involved with this for a while are going to be able to gather enough information to, to vote on this and. I mean, I, 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 you know. Do, do you guys feel that it's something you could do and with, or even with asking some questions of the applicant?
I read for it all and, um, Talia gave us pretty much the entire history.
Okay.
And so I think I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with me. Taking the easy path and we could, uh, you know, gladly accept the motion if someone wants to make it, uh. To, to clarify, clarify the intent of the, the master plan that it included the uses of, uh. Eight sixty-four and or eight sixty-six. If someone wants to make that motion, we could have discussion on it. Or if you feel you need, anyone on the board feels they need more information, you're welcome to. Ask questions of our town planner, solicitor, or the applicant.
I guess my only question would be if we did feel that we needed more information. Where would that be? Like, would I go back and look at the minutes from September? Twenty twenty-one, because I'm on there and I can, you know, I can do that right this minute, but. What else would I need to do between now and July, I guess is what I'm asking. Is there?
I think.
You'd probably want minutes from the totality of the discussion, not just from the night where it was decided. Because you would see how the application had progressed.
So from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, is that what we asked?
From whatever the master planned for its appeared for the planning board, which I cannot, I don't know the exact.
September eleventh, thousand eighteen.
Right, I could, I could get you that information. Is that the first day it was on there?
Yes.
Well, you know, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe. I mean, we, I, I, I've looked through minutes, I've looked through information, you've done the same, you've done the same, um. I believe the only place that indicates. That that use code was part of the application is the narrative that talks about a convenience store and deli, is that correct?
Correct.
So then, that's really all you're gonna find, so.
Yeah.
If the, if the board members are comfortable saying that because that was in the narrative for the master plan and that the, and, and the board. Approved that master plan unanimously with that narrative as part of the. Is, is part of the context of that master plan. And you feel that a deli, you know, could be construed as, you know, codes eight sixty-four and or eight sixty-six, I think. You know, I think that satisfies it. That makes sense?
It does.
So, I mean, we can make it that easy for it if you'd like.
I just have a clarifika- or question, I guess. Um, so if we approve. Based on the clarification, do we still need to do an amendment? Is that still?
You don't need to.
You don't have.
No.
Okay, just want to make sure that's what I heard.
And then essentially. It's essentially the same thing and it's the same argument that we made on the amendment as we made today. So.
And we're, and we're, and we're still gonna get, we're, we're gonna see this at the preliminary plan.
Correct.
We're gonna see, we're gonna see the, whatever, traffic studies, engineering, everything that goes behind this.
Yes.
So if, if it turns out for whatever reason that the proposed use, you know. Can't satisfy technical requirements and that'll, that's an issue, issues that will come up during. You know, that phase of the, uh, the application.
Correct.
You feel comfortable with that? Okay. Dana, how about you? I'm sure more than you were board members also.
Well, as you know, I'm quite curious. So I was just curious as to what the sense of urgency is at this point. When this is something that's seven years old.
So the preserve is a big. Uh, undertaking. There are a number of other uses that are in progress right now and have been in progress over the seven-year period. It was anticipated in the master plan that the total build-out would take. Anywhere up until two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-nine. In the middle of that, we had COVID, which slowed everything down, as everyone knows, so everything was slowed down to a. A snail's pace at that par- period, but we've been progressing. Uh, we've done two B, two B is under construction right now, which is a number of multifamily units are under construction, a number of. Tiny homes have been constructed or it's, and remain under construction. Two B also has some single-family home elements, has a.
Top lodge.
Top lodge, which is a, is a, a big lodge, similar to the lodge it's here, so we've been progressing with other things. And now we're moving forward with this phase of the, of the development and there's, there will be other phases, there'll be a number of other phases. And it's probably gonna go beyond two thousand twenty-nine as it stands right now, if it goes to full, full build it up.
I think I could score a clarification.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion. To, uh, at the request of clarification of uses for master plan decisions, September eighteen, two thousand eighteen. Amended September fourteen, two thousand twenty-one, the Preserve at Boulder Hills Phase Two. Submitted by Anthony Americo Scungio. On behalf of clients, the Preserve at Boulder Hill LLC, the Preserve at Boulder Hill. Two LLC, the Preserve at Boulder Hill Three LLC. And the Preserve at Baldur's Hill Four LLC, Castle Resonance LLC. MTM Development Corp. That the permitted use should include eight six four and eight six six.
Will I have a second? For that?
I'll second it.
The restaurant get, I mean, for the gas station convenience store. That's a, over that. Right.
Yeah, you could, if you wanted to amend the motion and then redo the second to say attached to the gasoline service station.
So I'll amend my motion that the, uh, clarification of the use. Uh, permits for that hostel is only for the gas station in Delhi building.
Well, so deli is not a use code that we have. They use the phrase deli, but that would comport with restaurant. So you'd want to just try and focus on the convenience service station. See, it'd say that it's, it would be incorporated within that particulars.
The plans say it's a proposed vehicle service station with convenience store.
Yeah.
That's what the plans say.
Yeah.
Just want to refer to is that.
So, uh, amending my motion so that it in. Includes that it, this, uh, permit use change or clarification. Is specifically for the, what was the terminology?
Proposed vehicle service station with convenience store.
Proposed service station with a convenience store.
And then do your second again, or anyone can second it, okay? Now, you want to discuss?
Anything special on that?
That's fine.
That's fine, Chris. And Mr. Scungio, that's, that, that'll work for you.
It does, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
I know.
Thank you.
All right. So that's, uh, that's the easy one. Right, item number two under new business. Is a request to removal of inclusionary zoning requirements and return a fee in lieu. For master plan decisions, September eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Amended September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Preserve at Boulder Hills Phase Two and final plan decision, June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The Preserve at Boulder Hills Phase Two B, submitted by attorney, um, America Scungio. On behalf of his clients, Preserve at Boulder Hills LLC, I'm just gonna leave it at that. Um, and all the other LLCs and MTM Development Corporations. Um, so once again, Talia, if you can give us a quick overview of this guy, please.
So. Town of Richmond repealed the exclusionary zoning regulations, chapter eighteen eighteen on May twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. The requirements of this since repealed regulation apply to any application that was vested under the zoning ordinance in effect prior to the chapter's repeal. Including the preserves' phase two master plan. The purpose of the inclusionary zoning ordinance was to assure that all residential developments authorized for six or more dwelling units. Contribute to the lo- supply of low or moderate income housing. Chapter eighteen eighteen, section eighteen point eighteen point zero two zero read in part. That any development that results in the net addition of six or more dwelling units. Must contribute to the production of low or moderate income housing in Richmond. To determine how many inclusionary units must be produced, the basic number of units permitted is multiplied by fifteen percent and fractions are rounded up. Per chapter eighteen eighteen, section eighteen point eighteen point zero three zero A. Developer could satisfy the requirements of the inclusionary zoning ordinance in the following ways. One, constructing low or moderate income housing with a development site. Two, constructing low or mo- low or moderate income housing at another site. Three, substantially rehabilitating existing housing, either at the development site or at another site. That'll be converted to low or moderate income housing, or donating land suitable for the construction of lower moderate income housing units. Five, paying a fee in lieu of the construction of lower moderate income housing. The ordinance allows the developer or builder to determine on a unit-by-unit basis. Whether to pay the fee in lieu of construction or satisfy the obligation by some other method or combination of methods. It explicitly stated that the construction of accessory dwelling units would not satisfy their obligation. The master plan approval rendered on September eleventh, twenty eighteen and amended by the planning board on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one for phase two. Included the following references to chapter eighteen eighteen. On page three, under general, project-wide twenty-six affordable units. Twenty-eight affordable units of the two ha- clubhouses are converted, be required to meet the inclusionary zoning regulations. The applicant proposes to consider a number of affordable housing solutions, including proposing a zoning ordinance amendment. Constructing affordable housing units off-site. Rehabilitating existing units in Richmond, donating land suitable to the town for construction of affordable housing. And or paying in lieu fees to the town. Twenty-six units were required because the total number of dwelling units proposed for the master plan was a hundred and seventy-two units. A hundred and eleven single-family residential units and sixty-one multifamily residential units. A hundred and seventy-two units times, uh, point zero one five is twenty-five point eight, rounded up to twenty-six. Page six, zoning ordinance consistency. Chapter eighteen eighteen of the zoning ordinance. There is no sub-proposal to meet the inclusionary zoning requirement, although the application acknowledges the requirement and list choices available. Such as onsite affordable housing construction, off-site affordable housing construction, providing a fee in lieu of affordable housing construction. Land in lieu of affordable housing construction or pursuing a zoning ordinance amendment. Page eight, amended conditions of approval. Fifteen, a written proposal to meet the inclusionary zoning requirement shall be submitted at each preliminary plan flash phase application that includes dwelling minutes. Condition amended September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. The preserve has elected to pursue a phased approach for develop- developing the site. Also, subsequent phases to date have been predicated upon the phase two master plan, thus phase two B. When the preliminary plan for phase two B was approved, included the following references to chapter eighteen eighteen. Uh, that was rendered on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Page three, findings of effect, number nine, a total of three units are required to be made affordable based upon a total of twenty qualifying dwelling units proposed. At the time of final plan review, the applicant shall satisfy the provisions for three dwelling units in accordance with the inclusionary zoning requirement. Chapter eighteen point eighteen of the zoning ordinance for phase two B. Page five, conditions of approval. Number five, prior to final plan approval, the applicant shall pay fees in lieu of affordable housing construction for three units to the administrative officer. Or the applicant shall provide documentation for three off-site affordable units. Amendment to the preliminary plan approval for phase two B. On May twenty-fourth, twenty, excuse me, on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the planning board heard the applicant's request to amend preliminary plan condition number five, which was approved. The applicant's request from that time has been included. It dictated that. Prior to final plan approval, the applicant shall elect one of the methods of housing production set forth in the inclusionary ordinance to comply with the inclusionary zoning ordinance. To provide for one affordable unit. If the applicant tenders a payment in lieu of construction and development of an affordable unit. That payment shall be made upon the filing of an application for a building permit for the first of the twenty residential units. Upon the filing of the building permit application for the seventh building permit. The applicant shall elect one of the methods, methods of housing production set forth in inclusionary zoning ordinance. To comply with the inclusionary zoning ordinance to provide. For one affordable unit. If the applicant tenders a payment in lieu of construction and development of an affordable unit. That payment shall be made upon the filing of an application for a building permit of the seventh, seven, of the seventh residential unit. Upon the filing of the building permit application for the thirteenth building permit, the applicant shall elect. One of the methods of housing production set forth in the inclusionaries or inclusionary ordinance. To comply with the inclusionary zoning ordinance to provide for one affordable unit. If the applicant tenders a payment in lieu of construction and development of an affordable unit. That payment shall be made upon the filing of an application for a building permit of the thirteenth residential unit. Prior to final plan approval rendered on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four, the applicant provided an in lieu fee of eighty-seven thousand dollars. For one of the three units required for phase two B. The fee was provided on June fourth, twenty twenty-four. The applicant through their attorney has asked that the planning board remove the conditions that the applicant comply with the inclusionary zoning ordinance. The planning board must decide whether it will grant the applicant's request to remove the conditions or retain them. They have also asked that the planning board direct any and all in lieu fees that have to date been tendered by the applicant pursuant to the repealed inclusionary zoning ordinance. To be reimbursed to the applicant. Pursuant to chapter eighteen eighteen, section eighteen point eighteen point zero four zero B. All fees in lieu of construction shall be deposited in the restricted affordable housing fund established by chapter three point zero eight of the Code of Ordinances. And shall be used only for the production of housing for families with incomes of eighty percent or less of the area. And shall be used only for the production of housing for families with incomes of eighty percent or less of the area median income. Neither chapter eighteen, point eighteen, nor chapter three point zero eight provide provisions for the return of inclusionary fees paid. I do not know if the planning board would even be the appropriate body to petition for the return of these funds, or if the funds can be returned. Funds are held in a restricted account, which is administered by the town treasurer pursuant to chapter three point zero eight, section three point zero eight, point zero three zero. Money can only be awarded by a town council vote. Pursuant to chapter three point zero eight, section three point zero eight, point zero three zero, in accordance with the strict requirements of. Chapter three point zero eight, section three point zero eight, point zero four zero. The money held in the affordable housing fund shall be used to effectuate the goals of the affordable housing plan by creating low or moderate income housing. In the event that a municipality does not use the money, the funds are transferred to the Rhode Island Housing and Mortgage Finance Corporation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think, I think before we hear from the applicant, uh, does the board have any questions of, uh, from Talia?
Other than is this a request because they don't want any affordable housing? On the preserve and are you thinking going and creating minimum housing requirements elsewhere?
It's because of the, uh, repeal of the ordinance. And the applicability of the decision, the master plan is, and the ma- there's a master plan element and there's a. A preliminary plan element for phase two B. With respect to phase, the master plan, the condition of the master plan, condition fifteen, which Talia did. Read to you on a trial beach again, says the written proposals to meet the inclusionary zoning. Requirements shall be submitted at each preliminary fi- plan phase application that includes dwelling units. And, um, condition was amended on September the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, so to com- to comply with. The inclusionary zoning requirement on any future phase. For preliminary approval, there is no ordinance, so it's. The ask of the board is to recognize that that condition is no longer applicable because. Go on a going forward basis with respect to that, there is no ordinance to comply with. So that there would be no need to submit any. Or comply with any ordinance that has been repealed for any future preliminary phase of the master plan approval.
So I guess we can make this real easy and we could ask our solicitors to, if he refers with that. Cause if that's, if that's the case, it sounds like the board wouldn't have any choice. You know, that being said, I, I, I was under the impression that once you approve a master plan, the conditions of that master plan, even though the. Ordinance may have changed, still applies to that, uh, to that plan and future. Phases of the plan, but that's, that's a question for you, Chris.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with that. What you're saying is, i- it's vested under the law at the time. Um, I mean, kind of the, the way to, the way you might think about it is this. If. If the town were to pass an ordinance that was more restrictive. Instead of repealing one that was restrictive. Begging and arreins as more restrictive and applying it and saying, well, we're gonna apply it to the preserve. The first thing they would say is, well, we're vested, you can't do that, and they'd be right.
Right.
So it, it works both ways. Um, the, the, the easier part of the question for their request is, can you return the money? Because my opinion, you do not have the power to, to even make that determination. That is the town council, maybe. Yeah, and I have to look into that. There, there's no authority that I'm aware of, and I did check, not an exhaustive check, but I did. That requires the board or gives a mechanism for the board to remove that condition once it vests. And there certainly is no mechanism that I'm aware of. That allows you to make even a determination as to return the money that's already been paid. So that, that, that's what, that's what I'm saying. If, if there is authority somewhere that says otherwise, I don't know where it is, I'm happy to be educated. Mister Scungio's got it, you know, bring it out, uh, but I, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, but you don't, just to clarify, you don't agree with Mister Scungio's position that the board would not be able to. And, or the town would not be able to enforce the requirements of the, of, of the affordable housing requirements.
Certainly not, certainly not as, as what's been already done. He, he made it another argument, uh, this evening, which was going, on a going forward basis. And the town do it on a going forward basis, that's a, that's a, a different question.
So that's the argument is that because it's a condition. Of the master plan, plan approval to meet the inclusionary zoning requirement. There is no inclusionary zoning requirement. At the next preliminary plan application to comply with, and therefore there is no inclusionary zoning requirement.
But they're also asking to be relieved of it for phase two B.
That's something different, we haven't gotten it yet, I haven't gotten it yet.
Happening.
What, just, just for curiosity, when was this, uh, ordinance repealed?
It was repealed last year.
Twenty-one, maybe.
May twenty-first, twenty.
May.
Twenty-one, uh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Twenty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Correct.
And, and just, just to clarify, the, the, the reason the board chose to repeal. That ordinance was, was, was not because we were opposed to affordable housing, we didn't agree with affordable housing. Uh, we, we, we still had every intention to meet our affordable housing goals, to meet them, they're, it's in the comprehensive, uh. Per, uh, plan. The, the, the issue was that the, the requirements imposed by the state at the time. Would have increased, i- if, if we had, if we had kept the inclusionary zoning ordinance, it, it would have. It would have, it would have made it subject to very high density developments possibly. Um, you know, our, our previous town solicitor, I went through the, the meetings, the minutes or the video. From, uh, back in November twenty-three. And the issue was doing some preliminary calculations, we could have increased our density of subdivisions by sixty-five percent. Without actually achieving much progress with affordable housing, so. We decided to repeal the inclusionary zoning and with the idea that. The comprehensive permit would have been the preferred vehicle for providing, uh, affordable housing within the town. Is that kinda what you remember, Andrea? But, I mean, there was no intention that, hey, we just don't want affordable housing, we, we, we were, we were put in a position, quite honestly, by the state. That if we had kept that ordinance, it would have, it would have subjected the town to subdivisions that were gonna. Have excessive density and not in the locations that the town had. Had preferred those, namely areas of the town where we have city water. We have, uh, public transportation, this would have been in any subdivision throughout the entire town. And we felt that, uh, this was putting us at risk. Um, that, that being said, also, we've. We, we've had numerous discussions with the preserve on this and it's almost like the preserve has been kicking this down the road, which, you know. And, 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 and we were fine with that. We, we had, we had discussions with the preserve about how you were gonna implement the requirements of the affordable housing. At the time. You weren't sure, I mean, Paul sat in front of us and said, I'm not, I'm not sure, I, I have every intention of meeting those requirements. However, I can't tell you right now how I'm gonna do that.
Yes.
Well, that's, right, and then we, and, and then we said, okay, when you get to that point, yeah, let us, you know, let us, let us know whether it's be in lieu of. You're gonna provide land or you're gonna provide housing, so that's. But I don't think the intention was ever to eliminate it from, you know, those plans, but.
But we're faced with the condition of the master plan, this has complied with the ordinance, we have no.
So, and that gets back to Chris, is that, so. If Chris, if you're concurring with Mister Scungio's position on this and that the board really has. We have no say in it, the fact that we've, we've repealed that inclusionary zoning, we cannot enforce that requirement. Then it's kinda, it's kinda moot point, right, but.
I'm gonna, I gotta look at that further.
Okay.
Uh, Mister Chairman. All right, it's, it's, this is. By my, by my view, this is, uh, this is a fairly novel issue.
Okay.
And I'm not prepared to give you the answer right now. So what, what I would like, uh, from the applicant. Is. What they're proposing regarding on a going forward basis. Um, how they see it and whatever authority they, they may have, uh, maybe it's just a fairness argument. Maybe just, it may be that. Um, and then.
We, we're willing to comply with the ordinance, but there is no ordinance, so. So we're complying with the ordinance by not complying with the ordinance.
Well, the, the, the question is, is the previous ordinance, even though those were peeled, still, still applicable?
Because at the, at the time, that's, that was what was in place and.
Right, and it is invested. So I, I think, I don't think we're gonna be able to reach a decision on that too late without, you know, having our town solicitor. You know, have an opportunity to, uh, to research that a bit.
Okay, that's fine. So we can kick it over to the twenty-second, I guess.
I, I, I think so, unless, I mean, does, unless the board has, I mean, while we're here, if you have any other further questions, comments, uh. So that when, uh, our solicitor does, uh, you know.
The only question.
Search, he knows what he's filling for us.
The fee in lieu of that was paid, was that for the phase two?
A two B.
It's gonna be in the first seven.
So it was, it was the first one, and then when the seventh one is pulled, then another fee is due, and then thirteen, seven other fees.
Yeah, it's, it's, it sounds like, yeah, I know, we kinda suspected that, but we. That's not another purview of this board to be able to vote on returning funds to.
And then, but I believe that it may need a starting point to allow us to go forward to the council through you. That's the only thing, is some type of, if you, if you're inclined to say, yes, that fee should be returned. Then to just make that determination not returning it, but that it can be returned, and then we would have to petition the council. Or, or one of the town officials could have, the town planner could petition the council at that point to get that feedback.
And, and you feel that, and you feel that fee should be returned because of the.
Yes.
It, I, I, it still goes to the council, whether you.
Right.
Uh, whether, whether or not the planning board, uh, gives some type of advisory.
They're gonna refer it back to the planning board, I would think. Or want some type of.
I, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't think, we don't have the authority to. Give an opinion on.
But they're gonna wanna know if it was properly or improperly assessed, and then, and they're gonna be deferred to the planning board for that.
I guess that will depend on what, uh, you know, our solic- our solicitor finds out.
Right. Now, what I would say is if, if the town council were to, were to refer it back to you, that's fine, but that's, that's for them to do.
Cause when, when was that, uh, when was that, when was that fee pr- provided to us, uh?
Last year, last year.
Due in twelfth, twenty-four.
Yeah, which was, which was after the repeal?
Did we, was after the.
Yeah, a couple of weeks after.
Just after the repeal.
Yes. Yeah, but that was on the phase two B, which was already approved, so I can see the town solicitor's argument with respect to that and the applicability of that.
Yeah, that's a difficult one, cause then, then the other question I'm gonna ask is, you know, if, if, Chris, when you do your research. You know, if for some reason the council returned those, or, or, or returned those fees, does that mean? We have to look at anyone else who, um, has provided fees in lieu of?
No.
Return those?
No.
Why?
They're not asking.
But if they ask.
If they ask.
If they find out, hey, we gave the.
Assuming, assuming there is some entity that did that. We deal that on a case by case pay.
Okay. So it doesn't set a precedent, however, it could open the door.
Each case, we would, we, we'd analyze individually.
Yeah.
Just like a waiver, everything stands on its own two feet.
Got it. Sure it does.
Great question.
Okay. Anything else, uh, before we move on? Man, do we just need a, do we need a motion to continue this, or? It's not a here, so.
Yes.
Do you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so unless there's any further questions at this point on this, uh, on this subject. And get a motion to continue this, this session or addressing this, uh.
I'll make my own to continue the request by the applicant. Um, requesting removal of inclusionary zoning requirements in turn of fee in lieu. Master plan development, September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, amended September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Preserve at Boulder Hills. Phase two and final plan decision, June twelfth, plan twenty-four. The Preserve at Boulder Hills Phase Two B, submitted by attorney America Scungio on behalf of his clients. The Preserve at Boulder Hills LLC, one, two, three, four. Castle Residence LLC and MTM Development Corp.
You.
Second.
I need, any discussion?
Uh, and, and I'll, uh, that, and continue that until the next, uh, meeting, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
All right, uh, with no further discussion, all in favor?
I agree.
All right, so you want the.
Yeah, one, I have one personal item I'd like to address the board with.
You're gonna, you're gonna thank us for, you know, all, all we've, all we've done to.
I am.
Work at the preserve.
I am, because.
You enjoying the art, isn't it?
Yes, I am, I am changing my, the focus of my practice and, but for that last continuance, hope. That this would be my last meeting before the board, and I want to thank the board for their attentiveness, the professionalism, especially to you, Mister Chairman. Who've been through it to thick and thin with me since seven and a half years. Thank you for everything you've done for me, but I may be here next year, next month, but. I'm not gonna be here, there's nothing to find.
Your work for you also, I mean, we've had some contentious moment, but, uh, it's, it, it keeps it exciting.
It does.
Why you do this, otherwise I.
Thank you, Sir Chris.
He's sitting home drinking beer.
Very much. Thank you. Both, but I won't see you next month.
At least not in this capacity.
Right. Sorry, you'll be here.
No.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, now we can get to old business, um. Item one, workshop special use permits review of June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, mode special use permits in context.
So I just wanted to put the memo that I gave you on the, around the eleventh, uh, onto agenda. So I would make sure that all of you had received it and knew what it contained. Essentially, it is an overview of. How minor land development projects are reviewed. And it gives you definitions as to what they entail. So in some. Minor land development projects, which is a very broad category, are reviewed and approved exclusively by the administrative officer. Unless the application requires relief from the zoning ordinance in the form of variance or special use permit. Or street creation or extension is involved. So. Basically. The administrative officer would have enormous discretion without oversight from the public or the planning board in regards to granting, granting with conditions. Or denying all other applications. So if the planning board wants to retain the ability to review specific uses, the uses must be the subject of a special use permit process. My personal thoughts, and I've made this known to the board in the past on numerous occasions, but it bears repeating, because we have some new faces here. I believe that the planning board plays a vital role in reviewing applications, and I'm wholly opposed to wielding any kind of universal overarching power. To approve applications about the benefit of the planning board's review or input from the public through a public hearing process. I have found the TRC to be very helpful, because every member brings an area of expertise to the table that I do not have. And I firmly believe that the same is true for the planning board. And special use permit process would allow the town to benefit from your knowledge and consideration. So I put this together because I, I really wanted to drive home. Uh, the importance of our very extended special use permit process. Uh, discussion, because it, it really will have implications for how development is reviewed in town. So I don't have any additional, uh, specific and objective criteria for you to review at this particular moment in time. But I just wanted to make sure that all of you got a copy of this memo.
Yes, so it's just, just to clarify, so this, this, this only relates to minor land development projects.
Yes, this only relates to minor land development projects, but. A minor land development project is seven thousand five hundred gross square feet of floor area for new commercial manufacturing industrial development or less. An expansion of up to fifty percent of existing floor area or up to ten thousand square feet for commercial manufacturing or industrial structure. Mixed use development consisting of up to six dwelling units and two thousand five hundred gross square feet of commercial space. Multifamily residential or residential condominium development. A change in use of the property where no extensive construction improvements is sought. An adaptive reuse project for up to twenty-five thousand square feet of gross floor area in a commercial zone. Or no extensive exterior construction of improvements is sought. Or an adaptive reuse project located in a residential zone that results in less than nine residential units. So. It's, it is a broad category of things. You know, do I think that you're going to have a concrete manufacturing plant that is less than seven thousand five hundred square feet? Probably not, I don't think that that would necessarily be able to produce enough concrete to have someone go through all the bother of it. But. You know, there were other uses that the board make, I always use concrete manufacturing plants, not anything against concrete manufacturing plants. But people tend to think of them as being not something.
Little less positive than a blueberry field.
Exactly, exactly, so, you know, i- if, if there are particular uses. That you think that the board should have. Greater degree of control in reviewing. Consider a special use permit.
Of course, we know what that means, we, that means that we have more special use permit criteria to develop, but.
Yeah.
That's not necessarily a bad thing, and we may end up doing a lot of that anyway.
Yeah.
And it's a right, right now, I mean, right now, just to be clear, I mean. You still, you, you, at your discretion, if you. Even if it's a minor, um, land development project, you, I mean, you. If, if it's complex or you feel it needs to go to the board, you can still bring it to the board, which you, which, which you have.
Not, I don't know if I necessarily would have that ability.
You couldn't even. I forget how the.
If it's, if it's permitted, you can't really bring it.
I could, I could feasibly, there are certain situations in which an administrative officer can seek. Comments or can seek, uh. Opinions from the planning board, but that might not necessarily. Translate into you having a specific say on all applications.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I forget how that's written, so it does, it doesn't even allow you.
If the use is permitted, right, if the use is permitted, you, you need to deal with it administratively.
Yeah.
Right?
Unless you, unless there is a, a variance or a special use permit or street creation or extension.
Okay, so that's.
And then sometimes if there are, um. Like waivers associated with it that I can't grant, then you also have to come before the planning board. But. There, you very well could, there could be someone who brings forth an application that is something that. People aren't that crazy about, but there really isn't any other mechanism. For it to be reviewed except by administrative officer.
So why, why don't we see where our special use permits? Fall out in the end, right, because we may end up, we, we did look at including a lot more. Special use permits and areas that we hadn't, or keeping them in areas. And writing that's special criteria, so may, yeah, may, maybe as part of that process, once we get closer to the end on that, we can, uh, we can, we can look at it and say, hey. Do we, do we wanna, uh, protect ourselves for minor, uh, land development projects and, and. With the, uh, use as a special permit.
Exactly. So I more just wanted to kind of, again, as, as the memo is. Named special use permits in context, I wanted to give you the context of why this is such a pressing issue. But. You will get more specific and objective criteria to sink your teeth into at a future meeting. I said twenty second, I'm kind of hoping for twenty seconds still, because I think that there will be less. Uh, there might be less discussion at that meeting in relation to certain items, but. We'll see how it all, we'll see how all the other, you know, if there are other applications that I have on the hopper right now, see how all that goes.
So you're gonna send us some of this, some of these special use permit stuff to, to look at periodically through the. Through some jobs.
That would be my goal.
Got some.
Just.
Good vacation reading.
Yes, and just so it's less, um.
So they don't get.
Yes, yeah, less voluminous, yes, is my quickest said, yes. Uh, because it can be very daunting, kind of just look and go, ooh, I gotta.
So you do, you do get to use the TRC if you want, though, at your discretion. And in that case, there will be a representative from the board, and it's not going to a vote. Of the board, but there will be a member of the board in. And, and you'll have members of the, uh, of, of the town staff looking at it, so that's, um, that's a plus, I guess.
Yeah. Who, who is on that? Is that designated or?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I know it's you, but it could be, it could change or, or various projects, it could be, you know, someone else. All right.
I mean, what bothers me the most about this change is that there's not. There's definitely less public involvement and public scrutiny of applications. Which can be a good thing, can be in an applicant's opinion.
Bob, not at all, look, he's, he's here.
But.
So we take Bob out of the process, you know what?
I'm like a shopliver.
I, I think, I think that app- applications should have their day in the sun, but. In many of these. Depending where they are and what they are. It could be concerning, not to say that you're not gonna, you know, review appropriately, but it would give the public that opportunity to speak, yeah.
Right, I, I may be wrong, but I think that this was probably the state getting pressured by, uh, by contractors and land developers. To, to streamline the process and. Take, take away, you know, some of the town's authorities so that they could, uh, you know, push things through a lot faster.
And, and, and part of it is, you know, I think most of you know me pretty well by now, you know my bag, you know what, you know how I operate. But if you had someone different here, you might not know what they think or how they operate or what they do, and I could. Raise questions in your mind.
Yes.
But.
You wouldn't wanna be replaced by a power from your team.
Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention, so, uh. Guess we don't need any, any vote on this, it's just, uh.
Nope, it's just.
Much for information only.
Informational.
Thank you.
I, I do have one informational item that's not on the.
No, I'm just sitting, no, it's on the agenda.
I know, well.
Go ahead.
Um, so there has been, uh, the town council did appoint Nancy has to fill the vacancy. Um, she has not yet been sworn in to my knowledge, but that will be pending.
Good. Awesome, all we're looking forward to getting Nancy back since the, the minute, uh. Kind of the last council did, denied her, uh, request, uh. We've been looking to get her back, so glad she decided to, to come back. Awesome. Looking forward to that, thanks. All right, so.
I lose my seat at the table.
Nancy has, Nancy has to sit somewhere near me, cause I do rely on her to like. Kick me under the.
Oh, yeah.
I do some stuff, which is usually like three or four times a night, so. I gotta wear shin pads usually. All right, oh, great, um. So with that, gladly accept the, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
Thanks, everybody.